Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission Orders, our Wednesday, November 13th, 2019 meeting. Would all please rise with the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And at this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the commission that are here this evening. To my far left is alternate on commission Steve Allison. Next to Steve is Rocco Madarazzo, who's our secretary. To my immediate left is JP Benoit, who's the vice chairperson of the commission. To my immediate right is Jeff Cohen, a commission member. And next to Jeff is Jamie Hine, who is an alternate on the commission at the staff table, is our recording secretary, Cheryl Ann Tubby. And next to Cheryl Ann is Casey Han, our planning and zoning officer, town planner. And I'm Jim Saitter, the chairperson of the commission. Just as an order of business, there's three, two items on our agenda that aren't going to be heard this evening, all with the request of the applicant. First is a, item number one is a public hearing, a special permit for benchmark landmark development. That application is going to be continued to our December meeting. And the next item is item number two, old business site plan for Dunkin' Donuts at 682 South Conley Road. Again, that's not going to be heard this evening, both at the request of the applicants. Which brings us to the next, I'm on the next item on our agenda, which is new business, it's a site plan, multi-family conversion, two to three family house from McNulty at 5860 South Elm Street. Again, Mr. Madarazzo, if you would please note all correspondence to the record. If the applicant would please come forward and begin preparing for their presentation.
Good evening.
If you just let Mr. Madarazzo note all correspondence to the record, please.
Mr. Chairman, we have interdepartmental referral dated October 7th, 2019, signed by Chief Engineer. We have an interdepartmental referral dated October 7th, 2019, signed by Fire Marshal. We have a written correspondence referencing site plan 235-19, dated October 30th, 2019. We have a court finding dated November 31st, 2019, our site plan 235-19. We have an inter-office memorandum, Casey Han, town planner, Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, dated November 4th, 2019. And I believe that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Madarazzo. The gentleman would please introduce himself and give his presentation.
All right. Well, good evening and thank you for having us on the agenda today. My name is Francis McNulty, and my wife and I own 5860 South Elm Street in Wallingford. It's a three-family house, a two-family house, looking to have it converted to a three-family house. Do you want me to go through?
Just give us a brief overview.
Okay, great. So the, I've provided various documents, hopefully he has some pictures in our, in the application or with the application. We're looking to take a three-story existing two-family house, but it's three stories into a three, legal three-family house, making the attic an actual apartment. Each floor in the house is approximately 1,200 square feet, fairly large house with third floor also having 1,200 square feet. I received various documents from Casey's office with the water department, the fire department, and the, and Casey as well, some comments. I can give you some updates on what I've learned so far about that. With the, the water department, I talked to Eric, and he's, based on the existing size of the water coming in, the pipes coming in, it's a one inch. And there have to do estimates to see if there's enough flow to accommodate the fixtures that would be on each floor. And he's running those tests to let me know. And I'm also aware that if we indeed, we have to increase the pipes from a one inch to an inch and a quarter or inch and a half relative to the requirements, that's at my expense. I also noted where Eric had mentioned that if the fire department deems it necessary to have sprinkler systems that I would need to put additional line in just dedicated to the sprinkler system. So that was at the water end of it. The fire department, I spoke with the fire marshal actually prior to the application, just to make sure that he had a heads up and if there's anything I should be doing. Based on his memo that came in, he's, the requirement is that I have a, an architect to build up a stamped building plan so that that can be presented to him, as well as any requirements for building permits and so on. So I'm aware of that. In addition, the driveway, I spoke with Casey and the town planner, and she had mentioned I needed to modify the driveway. The driveway is existing now at a 29 feet by 70 feet, and to accommodate six parking spaces, that would be perpendicular spaces, we're going to expand the driveway to 42 feet by 70. To do that, and also the existing driveway kind of butts up against the sidewalk, it runs itself right up to the sidewalk itself. And what we're going to do with that is cut back the driveway about 10 to 15 feet, whatever it requires, and plant grass and shrubs there so that driveway won't be up against sidewalk itself. The driveway also will be using the existing curb cut, so there won't be any additional modifications needed for that. There's no exterior buildings, attachments, no exterior modifications to the house, everything would be internal. And I'm aware that if it deemed it necessary to put stairs outside, that would be a whole other process of going in for approval. So with that, um, okay, good questions you have.
Thank you. And Mr. Chan, before I go to the commission members, I know you had some comments, and I believe the gentleman addressed most of them. Any comments that you may have that may not have been addressed or need to be, need to be mentioned?
No, generally, all my comments have been addressed. He has plenty of room to fit parking in there. One thing I didn't ask, and the answer doesn't really matter, I just want to know what the answer, do you plan on doing like gravel or by two minutes for the?
We pave everything versus gravel. It's existing now on, on paving, so it would blend itself to the eye if I just did paving.
Sure. So they're going to do that, and he did note on there that it's going to be striped, so everything, it's nice that we're getting that additional grass in the front. And then, as mentioned, the, obviously, fire and building codes will get dealt with and fully addressed if this is approved.
Okay, good. Commission members, was there any questions for the applicant?
We probably should do a $500 bond just for the grass in the front for erosion controls.
City members of the public, like to make any comment on the application? Seeing none, I'd, come back there. Seeing none, bring it back to the commission for a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve a site plan for McNulty to add a third dwelling unit on the third floor of this existing two-family home, as shown on drawings entitled Francis and Susan McNulty, Site Plan Number 3, or 235-19, 5060 South Elm Street, driveway modification for compliance, subject to comments from Ed Rizzo, Chief Engineer, Electric Division, dated 10/24/19, comments from the Fire Marshal dated 10/21/19, comments from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, Water and Storage Division, dated November 4th, 2019, and a $500 bond for grass and erosion control.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Madarazzo. And Mr. Hine, would you please be voting for, Mr. Fitzsimmons' place. And voting beginning with Mr. Madarazzo.
Yes.
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 And yes. Application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Before I jump down to our bond releases, in turn, the meeting goes to Mrs. Hand. I inadvertently skipped approval of some minutes. Do I have a motion on the, for the approval or amendment to the minutes of our planning and zoning meeting on October 16th, 2019? Anyone like, yes, Mr. Hine?
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And one last minute, take a motion to approve the minutes of our workshop, special workshop meeting on Monday, October 7th, 2019. Again, if anyone has any comments, any additions, corrections, if not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the minutes for our workshop dated October 7th, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? With that, moving on, Mrs. Hand, the meeting is yours.
Okay. So, bond releases, Choate is ready to go. The other two may be ready, but I haven't done the inspections yet, so those will get closed. So I'm only recommending the release for Choate.
So do we have a motion to release the site plan bond for Choate Rosemary Hall, 55 North Elm Street?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we release, that we release the bond of site plan Choate Rosemary Hall, 55 North Elm Street, application 212-19.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Moving on.
Okay, the 2020 meeting schedule, we're going to postpone that for a month, just so I can compare it against holidays, because that was done properly. And there is an item 7A that was in your packets, so.
That's a memo from the EDC, is that correct?
Yeah, and that's also just, I was going to do a general overview, so it was, it was in your addendum, your agenda addendum. So that was, I was going to do kind of an overview of the workshop meeting for those who were not there.
Okay, could you please do that?
Okay. So, okay, so there were two, there were, kind of three items of significance that were included here in packets that were affiliated with 7A. So there's 7A, A, which was, is a memo from, or a letter from Joe Mira from the Economic Development Commission, dated November 6th, 2019, and that I will get back to in a minute. 7AB was submitted at the October 7th workshop, or prior to the October 7th workshop, and that was kind of the discussion summary, but I included it again for those who didn't get a copy of it. And then 7AC is what I'm going to kind of use to talk tonight briefly about what was discussed at the meeting and kind of what some of the outcomes were. I think the hope is that, and then, like I said, I'll get back to the letter from the EDC, the hope is that the commission maybe will be ready to, or think about a consensus in terms of how to move forward. So the two things that were talked about at the, excuse me, that were talked about at the October 7th, did I say that correctly before?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. At the October 7th workshop, were potential changes to the I-5 and I-X zones, and considering a new transit for a modification in term, to develop some TOD, Transit Oriented Development zoning. So in summary, some things that were talked about are, so as, in terms of the I-5 and the I-X zones, as you all are aware, our plan of conservation development update, which was done, adopted in 2016, the most recent launch, recommends exploring additional uses, exploring additional uses, and exploring possible reductions in the open space requirement that might facilitate appropriate additional development in those zones. So that's something that's been talked about for a long time, uses have been talked about for a very long time, since before I started here, in terms of what might be allowed in the I-5 and the I-X zones. And really, the, one of the issues is that, so the I, and some of what we talked about at the last meeting, the I-X is your industrial expansion zone, and that's really designed to be what it sounds like. It was intended to be additional industrial land in town. But there were some additional site design requirements that were put in there, and especially a high open space requirement for two reasons. One, to create sort of a campus feel, so that's how it's somewhat differentiated from like North Plains Industrial Road in terms of our industrial zones. And the other reason for the open space requirement was because some of that land is in the watershed. Not all of it, I would say maybe a quarter of the I, there's a pretty significant part of the I-X zone that has land not in the watershed, but some of it is. And the I-5 is what we call our interchange district, because it's at the interchange of 91 and Route 68. And it's a very visible area, and that was designed as sort of an, an office, an industrial park zone, sort of to maximize or take the most advantage of that location. So again, there are some additional site design requirements in that zone, and that zone is a little, is more restrictive in the sense that currently it doesn't allow some of the uses that are allowed in the I-X. It doesn't allow manufacturing, it does allow warehousing, but it doesn't allow manufacturing, it doesn't allow warehousing, that's the other one I was searching for. So there's been some talk about, and so the other thing, so the I-5 is a little bit more restricted, it also has that open space restriction. About three-quarters of the property in the I-5 zone is in the watershed overlay. So of the four corners, basically three of the four corners and a portion of the fourth are within the watershed. So there's an interest in, especially, I think there's a recognition right now that office, into office parks are not the wave of the future. So office parks, there's, there's very little demand, there's a lot of office inventory out there right now, and it's unlikely that we're going to see big office park developments for the foreseeable future. That has to do with changes to the industry and a variety of other things. But at any rate, so there's a recognition that maybe we need to revisit those zones and see if there are some additional things we can do that are still appropriate for those zones, and still appropriate for the intention and the goals for those zones. And I had included the sections of the zoning regs, because they each state the purpose of those zones. But there was also concern, because we want to maintain, we're maintaining consistency with the intention of those zones, but we also want to make sure we're properly protecting the watershed and properly protecting the drinking water. So I had met with the Water and Sewer Division and the Director of Public Utilities to talk about that and kind of get some input from them. And generally, what came out of that conversation, sort of the short version, is what I'm recommending at this point is, I think there's a, somewhat of an acceptance, and obviously, we would bring them into this conversation further if we, if we move further with this. But the representation to me was that there's somewhat of an acceptance of allowing uses that are permitted in, within one of those two zones, within the other one. So if it's already allowed in watershed properties, that there's a potential to, or a potential acceptance of allowing them in the other zone. So one consideration is to allow warehousing and manufacturing within the I-5 zone, provided, so that is a potential. But the part of the recommendation in that case that I would make is that we really look at our site design standards for that zone, because it's a visible zone, it's a zone that we want to keep attractive. So I had talked with our Economic Development Director, and we brainstormed some ideas about how to ensure with our site design standards that we still maintain the look. And there are very wide uses that can fall, there's a wide variety of uses that can fall within that category. So we talked about things like not allowing the height exception that's allowed in other industrial zones, so that you wouldn't end up with smokestacks or conveyors or things of that nature. Requiring that all loading be not visible from the road, and then it begin, basically in the backyard behind the building. So there was, there were several suggestions along those lines that, that I would suggest we were, we pursue if we were going to do that in that area. Because that's a, it's, it's, when you get off that exit, it's kind of an introduction to a part of Wallingford, and I think we've done a really nice job. I think all the developments in that area have been really attractive, and I think we want to keep them that way. So to some degree, part of the impact there is what's, is the way it presents, not always what's happening in the building. And we also, of course, would want to exclude some of the heavier industrial type uses. So there are some heavy manufacturing uses that we more heavily restrict in the industrial zones, and we would do the same, the recommendation would be to do the same thing here. In terms of any other proposed changes, I think at this time, and we talked about, there are some things, I talked about with the, with the utilities, about some additional things that could be done in order to sort of optimize what we're doing in the watershed, optimize protection of the watershed. And some of those conversations had to do with the quality of the open space, the nature of the open space that we have. And I also presented some information I had from my planners group about how stormwater management is really, should really be the focal point, and is really the most important component of watershed protection. So how your stormwater gets managed is really kind of the key element when you're looking to protect the drinking water. That being said, the utilities were still not comfortable, so even if we kind of put additional belt suspenders in terms of stormwater management, and our, and our watershed protection overlay district speaks to that. What it, what the watershed protection overlay district looks at is stormwater management. There are, there are additional stormwater treatment requirements in the watershed overlay, it doesn't speak directly to the open space. But the utilities were still not comfortable with, that they could support, say, a reduction in open space or an increase in building coverage or anything like that, at this time, in any of the watershed properties. So the recommendation, or my recommendation, is that we explore those changes, so that we might reduce open space. I mean, our open space requirement is 50% in these zones, that's a big, that's a big requirement. That means people can't use 50% of that land. And our coverage is 25%, so only 25% of that land can have a building on it, and it's a, they're minimum five per zones. But the idea would be that we would explore maybe reducing the open space and/or slightly increasing the coverage, but only in the properties that are not within the watershed overlay. So I would include in the regulation that if we make those changes, it would only be for those other properties, it would not be for the properties that are in the, the overlay. And I think that's really important to, to make that differentiation. Some other things that were talked about were, I made some, some other recommendations in terms of kind of, you know, I looked at the different uses that are allowed in the two zones, there are some things we can make, some tweaks we could make just to clarify some things. Mr. Cohen recommended that we add a specific land use category for call centers to sort of clarify that that would be allowed. Currently, we've kind of grouped them under office, but that's not explicitly clear in the regulations, so I think it would be useful to add it as a specifically abused category and kind of clarify what they are.
Yeah, if I could. Yeah, it was, it really, call center slash data center.
Okay, that's right.
Other than that, yep.
Okay, yep. And I think that's a good point, because I do think that's a potential, that's a use that has some potential in those zones. And the other one was to explore solar facilities, additional solar facilities. The other thing I mentioned was potentially allowing or kind of clarifying what might be permitted in terms of breweries, cideries, and wineries, and potentially allowing those as an independent category, because those tend to kind of cross over different categories, and we have ways that they're treated in each of the zones now. But I think we would want to have a specific conversation if we were going to allow those in either of these zones about what exactly we're allowing. Okay, so that was kind of the, I think, the, the nature of the recommendations for that, or kind of the direction that we might go if we were going to pursue some changes for the I-X and the I-5. And to that end, I'll get, I'll talk about that at the end. Okay, so then the other, the other item we talked about, which is also a recommendation in your plan of conservation and development, is transit oriented development zoning around train station, which I also think is really critical right now. There are, we have, the New Haven-Hartford-Springfield line is up and running now, according to, I was at a meeting yesterday, that, it's, it's housing related, that they were, the meeting yesterday, the presentation yesterday was about housing and the relationship between housing and transit and TOD, and someone from the state, there were two representatives from the state there, who indicated that ridership is, of the rail line is, has exceeded expectations so far. Either way, we, we are seeing, I think this is really an opportunity for the town. I mean, we have sort of an ideal situation in that our town center and our train station area are immediately adjacent to each other, and there's a really important nexus between the development of those two areas. And we're pretty, almost uniquely situated to have that. I mean, there are a lot of towns that would really, really like to have that and are really trying to create that. And we're fortunate that we're a town that already has it, and we have the infrastructure in place to support redevelopment, infill development, and new development in that area. So what I talked, or what I sort of presented, and then the commission talked about at the last meeting, is I think one of the important things to remember is we have an incentive housing zone in place, and our incentive housing zone is a TOD zone. And just to sort of clarify, not all incentive housing zones are T, are transit oriented development zones, but that was generally the design when the state statute was created, that was generally the idea. It's one of the recommended criteria for incentive housing zones. Not every IHC has it, but that's kind of what they were looking for. Our, our incentive housing zone is designed with reduced parking requirements, higher densities, mixed use in certain areas. So it's really centered around the idea of creating feet on the street vibrancy and taking advantage of the fact that there's transit in that area. We have the train station, and we have bus access in that area. So the idea being that people don't need two plus cars per household, and don't necessarily, and people that would want to live in that area don't even necessarily want to have two plus cars per household. And that people will take advantage of being able to walk and ride the train and things of that nature. And that's what makes it transit oriented. So, and there are a lot of advantages to the incentive housing zone. We're allowed to have design requirements that we can't typically have under result, under other types of zoning, which is, I think, a really important component with the Parker Place development. Even though they didn't fall under that, they, that design is in large part consistent with some of, with the design requirements in our transit, in our incentive housing zone. So, and I think it's important to maintain, also when you're allowing higher densities, it's important to maintain appropriate design standards, so that you don't end up, a density, density can be density can be, can present in a lot of different ways. So density really has a lot, the way density looks, you might look at two different developments with the same exact density and one is going to look super dense to you and one you're never going to know. And that has a lot to do with the design of, of the development. And it has to do with things like roof lines. So if we're allowing four stories, what does the roof line look like? We don't want flat roof lines for four stories because you end up with a much bigger looking building. So our incentive housing zone is, is a TOD zone. So the options I presented were, one thing we could do is look to expand and potentially modify our incentive housing zone. Another option would be to keep our incentive housing zone as is and create a second TOD zone around the train station area. And I really think the other benefit of our incentive housing zone is that it does have an affordable housing component to it, which is something that is needed in the state. Housing, housing in Connecticut is expensive and especially for young people that want to be able to stay in the state, it's important. But for a lot of people, I mean, for a variety of people, also we're seeing it with empty nesters too. A lot of them want to downsize from the big house that they have and want to be able to be near more conveniences. So to provide people with more options and options that are affordable and realistic for them is, I think, important. So it, so I think that's, and I think that's something we did a lot of, we had a lot of discussion about when we created our incentive housing zone. The requirement is that 20% of the units be affordable to people that make 80% of the area median income. That's still a pretty significant income. So that covers a lot of people and presents a lot of opportunity for people. So my recommendation is that we explore expanding and modifying as necessary the incentive housing zone. But again, that's something that would be for the commission to talk about and decide. The other question that came up is the way the state statute is right now, the incentive housing zone has to be an overlay zone. And I, I think there would be some question about whether we would want to do it that way or make that the underlying zone. So I have been trying to get ahold of someone at the state to answer that question since our last meeting, but I have not succeeded yet. I have a phone number and a name of the person who's supposed to be the right person now. So, because our, our, the person I worked with for years on incentive housing zoning isn't, isn't there anymore. So those were the, the two kind of things we talked about in somewhat of a nutshell at the last meeting. And so the question at this point is sort of for the commission and obviously discuss as you want, is what direction you want to go? And I think we, I, I think we should choose one to tackle and then tackle the other. I think if we try to do two significant changes like this at the same time, it'll end up slowing both of them down because we'll be trying to have two, like two sets of workshops all the time and I'll be trying to write two sets of zoning regulations all the time. So, so it was sort of the, I think what needs to be decided is kind of which direction you want to go in first. I think the incentive, depending on what decisions were made, are made about each of these will impact how long they'll take. So for example, if we're writing a new TOD zone, that's going to take a lot longer than, than pursuing the incentive housing zone expansion. The I-5, IX changes, I think generally are pretty straightforward because they don't require creating a new zone. So that's sort of where the letter from Economic Development Commission comes in. They expressed sort of, I think, a preference that we move forward with the IX and I-5, exploring IX and I-5 changes first. They say that we respectfully suggest that you consider your review of the industrial zones first as we align our request with what we feel is the greatest market opportunity. The ADC feels that reduction in current open space requirements in both the IX and I-5 zones, which extrapolates to potential additional building square footage on respective sites, will result in growth opportunities for our businesses and economic opportunities for our town. So obviously they, they leave it to you, but that was their position on things. So, that's where we are.
Thank you, Mrs. Hand. Yeah, I certainly agree with, with our town planner. I think if we, we try to go in, you know, on the same track with both of these, we're just going to trip over ourselves and it's going to slow the process down, you know, quite a bit. You know, in, I guess my opinion is I think the one that could be dealt with in a more quick manner would be the, you know, the IX and the I-5. Because I think certainly you've given us some very good suggestions and we had, I think, a very good discussion at the, at our workshop on some of the options. And I think that, you know, there's an opportunity to move on that one certainly a little quicker. You know, my concern is with, you know, with the TOD and whether it's a TOD or an expansion of the incentive housing, that may take a little bit of time just for you to be able to get an answer on what is the, you know, what some of the options or what some of the drawbacks may be on that. So, you know, that would, that would be my preference, but I'd certainly open it up to other commission members.
I agree. I, I actually like to do the IX zone first. I think it'd be, as you were just saying, it'd be a little bit straight, more straightforward. So I would support that.
Other commission members?
Mr. Chairman, at the last workshop, Mrs. Hand did an excellent job. The explanation of the IX and I-5 changes seemed to be a very fixed set of changes and very straightforward. I don't imagine from what we've seen at the last workshop and what we heard tonight that it would take anywhere near as long in doing that and it would further the, the growth of the town in the right direction. Where TOD, incentive housing zone changes, there's just so many options and we don't have all of the data. And like Mrs. Hand said, she's been trying to reach the state and, you know, get to the right people and, you know, that's a bear of a job in and of itself. So, I mean, I'm, I'm with you and I'm with Mrs. Hand on this one.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I mean, let's, let's move forward with the, the IX zone amendments, revisions. But I don't, I also, you know, are, are we going to be talking about design? You talked about design standards, so I assume that's going to come into play as well. I mean, it's not just going to be a straight, you know, we're going to add these uses. I mean, we're going to also be talking about design standards and that sort of thing to make sure that we, it looks nice.
So for the I-5 part of things, we, I have some, and they were, I think they're in the, yeah, actually on your 7EB, which was made out at the last meeting, I have a copy. At the bottom of the first page is kind of a summary of some of those recommendations. But those are site design standards, so we're not talking about building design and architectural standards which get more complicated. These, we have similar requirements, like these are more straightforward for me to write in, but yes, we absolutely will include those in any, so if we're going to move forward and making use changes in the I-5, I think it's, yeah, I think it's important that we include these too. So yeah, I mean, it, there will be some conversation necessary. Yes.
My only concern is I, I want to try to get through that as quickly as we can because I, I think, you know, there's been all these towns that have had new train stations built and I feel in some respects that we're in competition with them to the extent that we can do our part to take advantage of our train station. I'd like to move forward with that as quickly as possible too because the other towns are, are doing it, so.
And I will say to that end, we are, I mean, that's always something we're talking about in the background. Right now, we have, and this will be sort of coming out relatively soon, sort of as we talk about public information meetings and things like that. But we have a, a grant from, we have the grant from the state to do our TOD plan and then we had another grant. And then we did a project with DOT which involved, and that's the one that we've been talking about for quite a while and that's finally been publicly released, that report has finally been finalized and publicly released. So I'll bring that to you, I'll be bringing that to you guys probably next month in terms of, that theirs was a TOD action plan and then they, the second grant we got involved kind of doing a deeper dive with their consultant in terms of potential development scenarios and market feasibility for development in that area. And then, so that's some really useful information as we move forward. And then the grant we have right now is building off of some of the recommendations in our TOD plan for pedestrian connectivity improvements between like the kind of center hall quintipiac intersection, a little south of there, up actually past the train station platform up to almost Parker. And so we have a consultant making recommendations for those improvements right now and we're pretty, so they're kind of getting their draft plan together for public information sessioning and things like that. So we're definitely still trying to keep those wheels going in the background because I do think towns are making investments and trying to take it, I think it's important to maximize whatever benefits are available to us of the rail line, so, yeah.
The other thing, the other question I had, as you mentioned, affordable housing. Where does Wallingford stand in terms of its number of affordable housing units? I mean, does it meet the state requirements or?
We're at about 4%, which is pretty, pretty good. I mean, most, the majority of towns do not meet the requirement. I have some specific numbers I could give you from that housing group that I'm involved in and that's part of the reason I'm involved in. That's through our COHOG, our Council of Governments. It's a discussion of sort of how we facilitate affordable housing and what are the challenges and what are the benefits? There are a lot of different towns involved, so everywhere from, I mean, the city of New Haven to some of our much smaller, like Bethany is, is, has a representative there. So, so we're at 4% and we have, and we have approved two 36 unit developments in the last couple of years that have not been built but are not, I think you may be seeing, still seeing them resurface at some point. So, because we have our housing opportunity districts and have been approached about a couple of others. So we're, I mean, the likelihood for most municipalities of reaching the 10% in reality is not that great, but we do also get a credit from the state if you increase by a certain amount, and I have to double check what that is, within a timeframe, then you also are eligible for a moratorium for a certain period of time under 830G. But it's, it's, I, I think we actually, the Partnership for Strong Communities, which is a largely, they look at affordable housing amongst other things, they point to like Old Oak Village as an example of successful mixed income housing in Connecticut because it's been such a successful development and it's, it's attractive, it's a nice place to live and it's, it just works really well. So, so we have some progress, but I think we need to keep plugging away.
Are there any, penalties are the wrong, is the wrong term. Are there any downsides to not meeting that state requirement?
The, the major component is if you reach the 10% or if you reach certain percentage increment thresholds, then you're not subject to Connecticut State Statute 830G. And State Statute 830G is the statute that exempts affordable housing developments from, from, essentially from most local approval require, most local zoning requirements. So unless there's a, a very specific public safety issue or something like that, essentially the, the ability of the town to, to deny a development like that until you reach those standards, essentially you can't deny them. Now, industrial zones are not included under the statute, but basically anywhere else. So the downside of that is then the town kind of loses its ability to have any control over where your higher density developments. I mean, we have areas where we really, where we like to see and we think it's appropriate to have some higher density development. There are also areas where the infrastructure doesn't support it or it's not necessarily as appropriate. So that's where then the town doesn't have a lot of say. And that's where our, in Wallingford, we have our housing opportunity districts, which have been essentially friendly 830Gs where people come in and they want to do a multifamily housing development where it's not normally allowed with an affordable housing component. And we've worked with developers in order to come up with a zoning, a zone, an overlay zone that works for the town, is still appropriate for the town, but also works for them, rather than what ends up happening in a lot of places where a developer comes in with an 830G and there, some height gets denied and frequently there end up being big court battles and things like that. And typically the towns don't win. So, so that's kind of, until we reach that 10%, we don't have the same level of control over kind of where those types of developments are happening or what they're, kind of how they're structured.
Yeah, and so that sort of leads me to, to my point, which is that, you know, I, I think to the extent that we can, you know, get past the IX zone, move on to this so that we can encourage some of that affordable housing and try to keep, keep it in an area that we think is conducive to affordable housing, which would I, I think be down in that area. I think it would be beneficial to the town and it's something that we, as a commission, can do to sort of steer where that housing is, is going to go.
Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just going to agree with everyone else about prioritizing the I-5 and IX before the TOD. And the only, only question I had was, you know, we had the owner of that large tract in the IX zone at one of our, our workshops and she really didn't, you know, say anything about, you know, what we were proposing or, you know, she had no comments at all, as I recall. And I don't know if, you know, you could share anything or, you know, if there's been, I, I just want to get, you know, her feedback on, you know, what, you know, we're proposing here because she's going to be the, you know, affectee, I guess, of what we propose here.
Yeah.
You know, she wants to do something like that, so.
So she, and I think she's actually I-5.
Yeah, she's I-5.
But she, so that property is southeast of the 9160 Xander Chief. It's behind the two hotels or the hotel and the future hotel. And she, I think, has recently, there are, there are two sets of property owners back there and she represents one of them now. She's kind of, I think, taken over. And I, we've had some, some meetings and some conversations and I think she's really looking, I think she was looking for, and I'll invite her to maybe share something with the commission or come in if this is what we pursue next. She knows there will be more workshops to come and talk to the commission about specifically what she's interested in and looking to do there because I don't want to speak for her.
Right, right.
But I think she was really looking to gather information in terms of what the commission might be willing to entertain. So I think, I don't think she has necessarily, I think she's open to different ideas, but she wants to have some options there. And I think right now she's been, under the current regulations, she feels like maybe there aren't a lot of options there.
Right.
Right, right. Okay.
Thank you. Just a comment I need you on incentive housing and affordable housing. You know, I think that that's something that's, you know, that's certainly very positive and something that we need. The one drawback that I see to it is, you know, there's always the sunsetting of the affordability component.
Right.
You know, generally it's 25 years, 30 years, so today you could be at 10%, two years from now you could be back to 8% as some of those roll off. And that's, that's the one thing that's always, always, it's been kind of an issue for me, that there's always that 25 years, 30 years of affordability, and then after 30 years, they no longer have to meet that affordability component, and they're back to being market. And you, again, you could be at that 10%, and then all of a sudden, you could be back at, you know, nine or eight, 8% or something. So to me, that's, that's kind of the frustrating thing. It just seems to be a disconnect.
Yeah, and I think in some of our, like, in our, in our most recent HODs, Housing Opportunity District, I think the commission made it 50 years.
Yeah, I know, we increased it.
And I think, I think that makes a lot of sense, because 30 years in the grand scheme of things isn't really very long at all. That's maybe one, if you have an own unit, that could be one owner.
Yeah, an example.
So, yeah.
So there's a benefit, but there's, in some ways, there may not be a long-term benefit to the community.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, I would agree with that. So I mean, and we can explore that too going forward in terms of having additional, there's nothing to say you can't restrict it further. The minimum's usually 30 years in the statutes.
And Lawland didn't like it when I wanted to be in perpetuity, but.
Right. Well, and I want, you know, I'm wondering if we could do that. I don't think there's anything to say that we couldn't.
Couldn't do?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So I guess now, Mrs. Hand, the proverbial ball is in your court as far as, you've given us a very good, you know, direction and ideas for the, you know, for the I-5 and the I-X and what can be done. I guess my suggestion would be, if you could put this more into kind of a, more of a draft regulation, if you would, so then that can, you know, come back to the commission, we can have an additional workshop on that for, you know, a broader discussion, and then once we feel comfortable with that, then being able to go forward with a public hearing on it.
Okay. So why don't I aim to have a draft for you to give for you for your next meeting, your next regular meeting, and then we can schedule a workshop maybe for shortly after the end of the year?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Certainly to have something before the end of the year, I think, is unrealistic, especially to have a workshop.
Right, yeah.
So I think that would be, sort of, that would be appropriate. Any comments on that? Anyone feel comfortable with that?
Good.
Okay. And then with that, though, you'll still be, I guess, pursuing with the, with the state.
Yes.
As far as on the TOD, affordable.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Also, I think you did a very nice job on this, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So, item eight, administrative approvals, there was just one change of use, no, there was one change of use in the housing authority modification. Item number nine, oh, so there was not a ZBA meeting in October, so there were no decisions because there wasn't, there weren't any actions, and there's only one item on the agenda for November, and that is for a vertical addition to an existing house group. And then finally, zoning enforcement log, and before I, sort of in relation to that, we are doing our aquifer protection inspections next week. I do them with somebody from the water and sewer division. I guess we decided to wait until the cold drop and then go walk around on all the properties. So you will be, so I'll have a report on those. Also, some of the properties are due for renewals for their registrations, so typically we handle those by administrative approval because it's, there's nothing really changing. So you will be seeing those in the next, hopefully, few weeks, several weeks.
Does anybody have any questions on zoning enforcement?
Yeah, well, I have a question on the aquifer and zoning. When are you going to do that? If I'm available, I'd like to, you know, join you.
Okay.
See, you know, what goes on.
Yeah, so the first, I'll send you an email tomorrow. The first ones are on Monday, I think Monday afternoon, I think they're Monday and Wednesday afternoon for the next two weeks.
Okay.
So I'll send that email.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see what goes on.
Okay.
So, if I'm available. And then, you know, my usual question on the zoning log is, you know, just the, well, you know.
The cemetery?
Yeah, how we doing on that?
I don't, I don't have an update for you this month. I haven't heard any additional information, so I don't know.
If you could just follow up with those individuals, that would be beneficial.
Yes.
I know you're doing the best you can.
I'm trying.
I think he is much of a nudge as you can possibly be.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, as we all know, this has been, it's been an issue that's been going on for some time now, and.
Yeah.
It does need to be addressed.
Yes, agree.
It's, it's almost four years, yeah. So, but thanks, thanks for keeping on it, Casey. Appreciate it.
Okay. And are there any other questions, comments, etc., for zoning enforcement? Oh, I can also say that we did do the interviews for the now what's going to be full-time zoning enforcement officer position, so that should be, we should have our full-timer in place at the beginning of December. And we've offered the position to our current zoning enforcement officer.
One last thing, as far as inspections. I know, and I have no idea what it's called, because I always call it the dog pond, the dog pit, not the dog pond, but the dog.
Dog park, the pit, yeah.
No, on the issue that we had.
On the, uh, turnpike.
You're doing a periodic inspection of that, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
And hopefully not with Mr. Voltermittis in that position, I suspect we won't have an issue. Plus, anyone's had any other questions, comments, I'll, and Mrs. Hand, I believe, you're, we're all set, you're all set. All right. We understand the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
If we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Cohen, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Adjourned. Thank you.